Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome participants to the Hybrid Planning Board meeting of March twenty seventh. I'd like to take a call to order of planning board members, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Delicio, not here. Ms. Foley, not here. Mr. Olmey, here. Ms. Philbrick.
Here.
And Ms. Kenny.
Here.
May, thank you. Looks like we have a forum tonight. I'd like to remind all board members, guests, to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. And this meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is acknowledgement of correspondence. And I have two letters from Lorraine Iomoni on three fifteen and three twenty one. Gail, anything else?
There was one correspondence from a municipality, it's in SharePoint, and there was an additional comment. The additional letter that's also in SharePoint. So they're all in SharePoint. I don't recall what they are, and I can't pull SharePoint up at the moment.
I think one of them was from Wenham.
Wenham, and then there was, oh, the one you're signing, the document from the registry.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. At this time, the planning board would allow any comments from the public with items not on the agenda. Would anybody from the public like to speak? Okay, first item on the agenda is a presentation by the Civic Space Collaborative of the downtown work and an online survey. CSC was hired to have Mass Downtown Initiative grant of twenty five thousand dollars. We will be having a citizen survey. CSC will be giving a short presentation to us tonight with comments at the meeting or later being welcomed. Their work will be ending at the end of June, at which time they will be generating a plan for public art, public spaces, wayfinding and signage, and other focuses in the downtown area. Betsy, anything else to add?
Um, I included it in my staff memo. Um, they were also the consultants for Skating by the Sea. And Tiffany Marletta was the lead on that. And they were able to do some of the survey work while skating by the sea was going on. But now there's a survey that's going to be, if it's not already online. Okay, it's online, um, to um, get some ideas for downtown in terms of uh, public art, wayfinding and signage, um, uh, creating pocket parks and a couple of other things. This grant was um written well before I came on board and um so it was kind of surprised, everybody I guess was kind of surprised that both grants were funded. Um, and so the Urban Agenda Grant, which was the skating by the sea, the really good news on that one is that there was enough money to buy the skating rink. So that skating rink is gonna be there for the next ten to fourteen years. As a, as an off-season means to get people to come to Manchester and um, shop and eat and um, skate and all of that. So, um, and this grant, the MDI grant is um a situation where um the um Civic Space Collaborative is using some existing documents and studies, for example, the VHB study, the traffic stu- the parking study that was done by the Downtown Improvement Committee. Um, so they're using a lot of existing data to, to develop their plan.
Okay, thank you. And I think at this point, um, I'd like to introduce.
So we have Daniel is there.
And I've, Daniel, good evening, and I've given you.
And Claudia LaFontaine is there.
Okay, Claudia, welcome. Um, do I need to, do you want the ability to share your screen?
That would be lovely.
I've given you co-hosting, uh, how about Claudia? Do you need, uh?
What is?
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
All right, I'm seeing myself double on the screen.
Better two of you than none.
Yeah, this is a new experience for me.
Power in numbers.
All right, well, we have a, a brief presentation for you just to share what we've been up to. And a little bit more about the content. So thank you so much for, for having us here. It's part of your agenda, um, especially at a time when the survey is out. Yeah, we've, we've really enjoyed working with everyone here at Manchester. So provide a brief overview of what we'll be talking about. Um, we'll provide a brief overview of the planning process as a whole. Um, show you some samples of the public input survey that is live. Uh, and talk about how we solicited input on that survey during the Skate by the Sea event. I can show, uh, let you in on some takeaways from preliminary results that we're seeing from the surveys that are, we've received online and in person. We'll talk about what we're doing for outreach, and we have some time if, if you would like for some discussion as we talk about next steps. So the overall goal of the placemaking plan is to engage residents and business owners um, in the process of collecting in, from input on how they want to um, improve their downtown, make them more welcoming and accessible, uh, and improve the sense of place. So we plan on creating a, a plan for downtown that will include um three to four components, which we have narrowed um, in collaboration with Betsy and the Downtown Improvement Committee. So I can tell you a bit about that. And this is all related, as Betsy said, to the off-season event, which we were also working on, uh, where we popped up and engaged people uh, on, about placemaking during the pop-up event. So this project is a relatively quick project. We started ramping up in December and uh, but statutorily, we have to wrap up at the end of the fiscal year by June thirtieth. So we are now a little bit more than over midway through the process. Um, these were our meetings with the Downtown Improvement Committee. They've been our main point of contact besides Betsy, um, at the, at the town. And um, so we are, now the survey is live. Is the public input period, and once that concludes, we'll be able to assess the results and provide um the re- the results back to the committee in May, so we can um, finish up drafting the plan and solicit feedback on it by June. So moving, there we go. So the study area um, was defined in collaboration with Betsy and the planning committee. So this, the boundaries here are, include the boundaries from the VHB survey. Um, plus some, a couple extra areas over here and here to encompass kind of the, the full commercial areas and all of Maskinoma Park. So when we presented this to the Downtown Improvement Committee, we uh, presented up to seven options for components for us to focus on. And we decided to focus on the four of public art, wayfinding, restrooms, and streetscape furniture. Because a lot of those elements could also fold into some of these other ideas that came up around designing a pocket park. Um, you know, anything that we, all the feedback we received about streetscape furniture will definitely inform any additional, any improvements that you make to your parks in the downtown area. Um, tactical urbanism was a idea to try out some of the streetscape improvements um, that are being considered with VHB, and then outdoor dining again relates to streetscape furniture. So by focusing on those most pressing needs, including the restrooms, which you hear is, uh, would be a way to make as a, make Manchester more welcoming to visitors. And this was, these are the components we decided to work on. And as you can see, they're related to park design. Um, parking planning and streetscapes. So can I show you some samples? If you haven't taken the survey, this is a sample of one of the boards that you'll see uh, in so I'll show you a sample of some of the boards from three different uh, of the components. This one was around restrooms. Uh, so we tried to give folks an opportunity to say that they like these existing conditions with the existing porta-johns, or they would just want the cheap option to just put a shed around them to make them more attractive. And lo and behold, so far, feedback, feedback, especially during the event where we allowed people to express what they didn't want to see, we received a lot of red dots on the porta-johns. Um, there seems to be general consensus here that folks are ready for an upgrade, that they appreciated the temporary installations there, and that has proven a need for a permanent installation. Uh, this kind of modular layout hasn't been getting much um, resonance, but mostly these kind of built structures are getting, we're getting feedback that folks are most excited to see them, especially the medium-sized one. Um, people have been saying, you know, this large restroom would be amazing, but maybe a little too much for what Manchester needs. We asked a few questions about what kind of streetscape furniture people would like to see. And on this page, there is one option that is we are getting a, a significant feedback that people want to see. And that is, you can all think about what people want to see. So far, people want to see the seating integrated with plants is by far and away number one, and number two is Adirondack chairs. We've also been asking people about public art that they want to see, and especially from the feedback we received at Maskinoma Park, where we had a lot of parents with children there, kind of staring at Captain Dusty's. Um, maybe no surprise to you that people were most excited to see the option for creative crosswalk in that area. So the Skate by the Sea event was really um, really successful. It um, a lot of people came out to the event. We heard from multiple families who said that they came every weekend, that it was open. Uh, seemed like a great success. And we even had our friend from Frozen attend, uh, who is very popular, and um, he filled out a survey as well, which was really exciting. For parents and kids and adults alike. So the main takeaways that um, we have, we've are kind of articulating so far is that people are really excited about the potential of, for Maskinoma Park for additional improvements um, with artistic bike racks, plantings and native grasses and shrubs, and a creative crosswalk to go to Captain Dusty's. Um, the, it's a clear consensus to upgrade the temporary restrooms that are there. Those have proven that there is a need for restrooms in the area. And folks are most excited to see a medium-sized bathroom. We have asked about location for that bathroom, and I will note that so far, people are saying that of the options presented, um, people are most excited to see a bathroom at Maskinoma Park near the parking lot. But that could change, survey's still open. Um, there's also, interestingly, a preference, a desire for a parklet. So this kind of goes back to some of those related topics about outdoor dining um, and pocket parks, that the option for having seating that's integrated with plantings would work really well if, for example, if there was a parklet that was built to take over a parking space in downtown that could be removed during the colder months and installed for, uh, as a kind of picnic area. So those are um, some of the preliminary takeaways we're finding um, from about a hundred people who attended the open house, and we've received over fifty survey responses online so far.
Now actually at uh, over two hundred and seventy responses. So we've gotten quite, quite a big turnout on our online responses.
Okay, all right, cuz yeah, the last time, uh, everything I've been saying is based on the first fifty, so maybe those extra.
The trends are still very similar, but we've got quite, quite a large number of responses since then.
All right, thank you, Claudia. And are the, are the trends similar in terms of demographics of people who are answering? Cuz that was something I was really um, curious to see is that we've received a really great spread of involvement from people who are geographically all over town. Um, ages is a really perfect bell curve, um, receiving responses from people of all ages. But I will say that the majority of respondents are women and not men. So if you know men who need to um, who might want to fill out the survey, please, uh, give them a, give them a heads up that this is out there.
Yeah, that trend is still, is still following.
Interesting, okay. All right, well, the survey is still live. We're keeping it open until April fifteenth. Uh, that was the date that was set by the Downtown Improvement Committee. So flyers are posted around town. Evidently, someone is doing a great job with outreach. If we just received a hundred and fifty more and over the weekend. Um, so we ask you to please continue sharing with your networks. Um, and once the survey wraps, we have dedicated about ten hours of our time for each component to write up um, some best practices. We've received some um kind of more detailed scopes from the, from Betsy and the Wayfinding Committee about what will be included under each component for each plan, for each com- what will be included in the plan for each component. Um, but feel free to reach out to us, uh, if you have any additional suggestions. Um, and so next steps are to analyze the remaining results. We'll be meeting with business owners and other key stakeholders in the coming uh, weeks. And then we'll be developing those project concepts with those key stakeholders, including the downtown, the DIP committee. So um, yeah, you're already doing a great job. Apparently reaching out to your networks, we appreciate that. And um, we're gonna meet next with the Downtown Improvement Committee on May seventeenth, is our plan. All right, so we're gonna stop sharing and open it up for comments or questions.
Any questions from the board?
I, Chris. So can you, um, you've obviously done this for a lot of other places besides Manchester, I guess Essex also? Are you working with Essex as well?
Yeah, Essex is our, actually our one other community where we're doing this kind of placemaking plan project.
So are there differences between Manchester and other communities where you've done this in the best?
I would say there's significant differences between Manchester and Essex, yes. Um, I mean, the, differences uh, uh, in, in the kind of components that you're interested in, in focusing on, Manchester. There are, in Essex, they have a very different kind of geography along the causeway, and so they're concerned about the landscaping, the medians. And being creative about wayfinding cues because they're limited and the kind of signage they can put up on Route one thirty-three. Manchester, you have a lot more possibilities with wayfinding. Um, you can do directional signage. And the dip I know has been working very closely on that, so we can fold in a lot of their recommendations into the plan to make it comprehensive. Um, and also Manchester's in pressing need for a public restroom is something that Essex is not facing. So the components are, are really different, I would say, in these two plans.
But um, do these restrooms require a lot of infrastructure work, um, water, sewer? How does that work integrate into that park area?
Yeah, um, Nate shared a pretty comprehensive study that has been conducted on this. There, there are apparently sewage and electrical hookups that can be made. Um, although it will take an extensive amount of permitting on the town's end. Um, because it is subject to Chapter ninety-one regulations, uh, since it's a filled-in tideland. Um, and other issues as well. So it's not gonna be an easy installation. Um, but it's something that the town can definitely chip away at and work on.
Hey, thank you, Laura.
Um, I guess my question. I have, I have a question and a big picture to start with, and a bunch of comments. Uh, placemaking is an interesting word, and I'm wondering it, placemaking for whom? And the items that you've identified, which are wayfinding, bathroom benches. Um, are elements of, you know, uh, an art, public art of um, an aesthetic. But to me, placemaking is about gatherings and events and people or, uh, so that's the first question, it's a question. And then the second one is you've given, I took the survey, and I uh, felt that there was um not a link to the historic elements of Manchester, the existing benches that have been popping up through the longevity project that are already there. Um, and I was on the Downtown Improvement Committee many years ago when one parking space was lost to a bump out, and so I, I can't imagine a parklet that takes a parking space being successful, but none of, and um, they see that this, my concern, or my, I guess my, uh, maybe it's not a concern, I guess I would encourage you as you synthesize the results to think broadly about the other issues, find out about the other issues that are being talked about in other places around town. Uh, historic flooding, you know, with natural flood control, viewscapes. Iconic view from Reed Park right down the harbor. You know, a bathroom there is, to me, seems to me to be majorly problematic for a lot of people. Um, and uh, parking. And make sure that you um, integrate your recommendations with sort of the pros and cons with a nod to those other issues that may come along, because I think if you don't acknowledge them. Uh, you know, for example, a bathroom at Maskinoma Park might be problematic for views. Or would need to keep an historic character of the town, or whatever. Um, and have the pro of people at the, at the band concerts have a place for a bathroom. You know, that's like a pro-con kind of acknowledgement in its synthesis rather than single-issue kinds of solutions. I think the report will be more successful. So that was a question that I, that I've talked over, sorry. The question was placemaking for whom? And what is how are those elements defined placemaking?
I would say that um this is placemaking for the first and foremost with I would say people who, the residents of the town, people who have businesses in town and people who visit. Um, Manchester is already an incredible place. I mean, I've visited many times. I went, one of my favorite days in high school was taking the train up to Singing Beach. So with all my friends, um. So I do think placemaking is a somewhat of a problematic term, because Manchester is already such a great place. Um, that is the, the, the name of the grant as designated by the state. So that's, that's why we're using it. I will acknowledge that we have not yet spoken to the Historical Museum. And we do intend to reach out to them during this uh, outreach period. So um the, and I hear you that we did not show the existing benches in the survey, which was a bit of an oversight. Got put together pretty quickly as we were doing the event. Um, so we will definitely include those in the final plan. Um, and I like your suggestion to include more of a, a pro-con approach to the findings. Um, because as you mentioned, there are both opportunities and drawbacks to any solution. And so I, I think it's important that we are um that we present on both sides of those of those issues.
Is it, who's Historic Commission rather than the museum?
Okay.
Well, the history, that they've stated, the Historical Society has indicated that they have an interest in more um, kind of plaques or signs with historical information.
Yeah, great.
And so, so Civic Space has known that. So we probably need to get you into the Historical Society as well as talking with the Historic District Commission.
I'm sorry, one other comment. That, I think that also in terms of the wayfinding signs and maybe historic signs. Um, I do think that you can bring a lot of value to some uh, consistent design. I know that the, there's the, the signs that popped up from the CPA that are um, large, there's one for Maskinoma Park, and one for Singing Beach, one entering Manchester. That I know some people feel are out of keeping with the, you know, there's a kind of a hodgepodge of signage. So I think that you could create a, um, kind of a uniform sign standard, and then, and there's also zoning around signs, which is another whole issue.
Yeah, I.
I'm sorry.
Um, I love I love the enthusiasm around historic uh, and wayfinding signs. Um, we'll know, we just have about ten hours for each component set aside, so we won't be able to do a full wayfinding plan. Um, but one of the deliverables we were considering was to help you put together an RFP. So you could, uh, and some cost estimates, so you could solicit a design firm to put together that comprehensive plan, if, if you think that would be of interest to you.
Laura.
Hi, uh, thanks for an interesting presentation. I'm thinking about placemaking. Uh, you're showing both kind of temporary measures.
kind of temporary measures, pop-up, pop-up parklets, um, the skating rink, things that are kind of um, temporal, and I think that those are very good for finding out um, needs and activities, what people are interested in and kind of trying things out. It's a great way to pilot things. So I like that. I think maybe separating what the more permanent changes are that are proposed, because we do want to prevent a hodgepodge. So I no, I wouldn't want to see a set of artistic bike racks here and some wayfinding signage over here and um, if we're gonna think about how Mascanoma Park, you know, to accommodate some of these things or any of our streetscape, it wants to feel um, integral, wants to feel coordinated, and it wants to, because Manchester is already special, it should really feel specific to its place. Uh, and it should serve a function. So, you know, like artistic bike racks, uh, I see them around lots of places, Kendall Square, you know, they might have a sort of science theme to them, but I would just caution us that they can, you know, let's let's be careful that we don't do things that are kind of decorative but aren't terribly functional. They don't like work all that well as bike racks, or they're sort of overly cute. Um, there's so much good stuff happening in the kind of scenic realm that I I think we do want to kind of avoid clutter and want to be careful that we should do things in kind of a cohesive way that for the more permanent things. You know, really deserve a more of a design study. I can imagine that a restroom in Mascanoma Park doesn't have to interrupt the view. I mean, I know there are areas with kind of trees and shrubs already. You could imagine that you might take as a model, one of the um antique bathhouses from from the um, town that the Manchester Historical Society has one behind there. Um, museum, and that could be a model for a public restroom for Manchester. So it should really feel site-specific. Um, I think of Canomo Park or rather Canomo Point in Essex. I don't know if you all looked at that, but there's a little park right on the end of the point there that's just very simple with some furniture and a deck out over the water, kind of use of the water, but it feels so specific to its place. It's very simple, but it just kind of magnifies the place that is already there and makes it more accessible for public use. So I think that that kind of thing is a large benefit. And if we do need to go through Chapter ninety-one, which we would, I think a restroom is the kind of project that could demonstrate the public benefit that is required for Chapter ninety-one.
Thank you. Your comments are noted about wanting cohesiveness and to avoid clutter. Talking again, emphasis on talking to Historical Society, did not know they have antique restrooms that we could potentially use as a model, so.
Yeah, it's a changing house, probably a bathhouse, but really, you know, unique to this town in terms of its aesthetics. That would be one thing. One more thing I wanted to add was the um seating with planters. Great as a pop-up thing, somebody really has to own a planter, they can look pretty shabby quickly, and they do require time for somebody to water them. So I think seating with plants is actually different from seating with planters. So planters are great as a kind of um element that comes and goes away again, but as a permanent infrastructure, I would say, again, it should be more of a cohesive a, you know, larger plan for where the furniture ought to go and what what plants might be putting in the park. Just comment on the planters.
Susan, anything?
Anything I was thinking about has been mentioned.
I have one more.
Yeah.
Uh, flags. And it's this town is crazy about flags. I think anything we can do to encourage them would be appreciated.
I think that could fall quickly into the visual clutter.
Flags are your flags that come up and go down, you know, they're
Yeah, I guess. Are you talking about like banners on light poles?
Yeah, that kind of thing. Yes, like all the American flags we hang all over the place.
Well, there's two pieces to that. One is I'm not sure that the Daniel would know that anybody would know that um, at Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, there are flat, there are holes in the sidewalk that are that where flags are put, and then they are raised and lowered every day by volunteers. And so um, I guess that kind of goes to my prior point that there are already a set of things. And I I agree with Laura. I I my sense when I took the survey was, yeah, I like the artistic bike racks, but not necessarily in Manchester or what would it be? Um, and I also would encourage you to skim through the master plan because town character was a big uh, um piece, and I didn't get the sense that your imagery reflected a thoughtful set of things around town character. And um so to again, to for to what end? One of the things, though, that the town, that the master plan somewhere in there did contemplate, and I can't remember if it was a recommendation or just a discussion, I never made it. Nonetheless, one of the members, there was a lot of, there was some discussion about public access and public sort of a walkway along the shore. And Mascanoma Park has that lovely walkway that maybe could be improved, made accessible as um, and the the harbor and the ocean are certainly part of Manchester's character and part of its place and public um uh, a- access to that. And there already are a whole series of benches from Captain Dusty's around the point um, that are all the same, probably many in need of levels squeezing up, some of which are memorial benches too. So again, if they were replaced, maybe uh, uh, thinking about sorry. Um, uh, the the treatment of the memorial aspect of exists of benches, um if they're if they're permanent structures, I think um is important. There's there is a new, relatively new, I think Ralph Kershaw Memorial there at Mascanoma Park with the granite um, pieces. If you look at the bandstands off to the left. Um and I think um, how do, maybe that's a larger Mascanoma Park question, but how does how do those things appropriately fold into a cohesive Manchester-specific uh, plan? So um uh, one last thing is I did take the survey. I've done many surveys, and I think your survey is great for general direction, but it is not comprehensive enough to make policy decisions based off of it. I think it's a nice, it gives you a sense of what people like. They like plants, they like a smallish building, they like you know, traditional seating, but um because it's in single-issue images. Um, and people take it quickly. And and I think your sampling uh, method, while we're getting a lot of response, it's people who went to an event or people who are on social media. That's how people are finding out about it. And those are not um uh, a fully representative any more than any other surveys, I guess.
Should we have some surveys at town meeting?
I guess you could. I just
Hand them out to the men.
So I think it's fine. I think it just have to recognize the that it's limits.
Yes.
And that's okay. And I always like to see us, you know, any good survey has a limits to the data section.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Absolutely. I mean, that's why we're here is to acknowledge the survey is is a somewhat general and kind of fun to go through, um, but certainly needs more follow-up and direction from key stakeholders like yourselves.
Daniel, I assume lighting is not part of any of this. Right? Lighting signs or lighting uh the parklet.
No. Correct. Lighting is not part of this. We've been Yeah, that was an extra component. We weren't able to fold in given the debates about lighting that are happening in the town already.
Hey, thank you. Um, any other questions from the board? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'll put my um, my email in the chat and uh, you're all free to let me know if you have any additional questions or comments or anyone that we should be reaching out to during this period. But thank you very much for your time.
All right, um, next item would be um the next steps on our amendments to zoning. So I I wanted to put this on the agenda for us to begin thinking about which, if any of these amendments, we want to forward. What if we want to add any new ones to the special town meeting in November? Um, some of these that in their current state still require some more work. So I'd like to begin discussions on these at our April tenth meeting, moving to our first public hearing in June, as per the schedule that uh, Betsy laid out. So um again, I I I don't think we want to really discuss anything tonight, um, but I just wanted to get this on the agenda to begin thinking about it so as we can, as we move this forward.
Can I just make a comment about that? So that schedule I ended up laying out just because um, I wanted to figure out why it was such a crunch time and um, at various town meetings. And the thing is, is that if you start as, if you start looking at zoning articles in September, it's too late.
For April?
For, no, for for November. Um, so it it's kind of one of those things. It should be a constant review of there's a lot of good work that's been done, and it just seems like you have to jumpstart it. So for Fall Town Meeting, we we probably I have to have a hearing before everybody leaves for summer. And then starting in September, go right back into it again. And in the meantime, you know, a handful of us can be working on various articles and putting them through um, legal counsel. So it's um, so that it's not this craziness um, going into the fall or again, um, in the Spring Town Meeting, if you started up in January, March comes really quickly, and that doesn't give you enough time. So it seems like if there were right before, you know, in early November, um, there was a public hearing on articles and then right in the beginning of January again, you'd have, there'd be a lot more discussion, a lot more wiggle room. Um, and but that schedule was just a suggestion. Um, I know Becky was uh getting a headache over it, but
Well, no, I think it makes sense. It makes sense. Last time we, you know, both times I think we were a little bit rushed, so. Um, Sarah.
Um, well, certainly if we were to advance administrative section, the adult entertainment review, we would now have already had three public hearings. At this point, we've had three public hearings on those those that we, those those articles. Some of the details have changed, but the the substance, so um, and I think that um, what we will have in June or soon after the town meeting is our complete zoning. And so it might be strategic to in June have a primer on zoning for the public. What how the zoning, what is zoning, how it's organized, where you can find it, how it affects you, what are the, what's a special permit, what's a by right, just in the big picture. Because I think the problem i- is as much about people not understanding that. And even if we have that forum, many people still don't understand it, but nonetheless, it will be an effort. And that we've never, at least in my tenure, paying attention to this, we haven't done that. And so I think that's a piece that would be helpful regardless of what bylaw changes we put forward, and we could put some thought, maybe it's an open house. The open house where people actually, where we do a presentation and then people will walk around and about different issues or some, you know, some more uh, both sort of talk at you and and participatory kinds of things. That's just a thought, but um the articles, it is important to remember that those articles that we that we've tabled for the moment have had three public hearings.
I I still think we need to have a session where the public can ask us questions specifically about the articles.
Absolutely.
What does this mean? Does this mean I can do this? Can I rent this? Can I do that? You know, those kind of things. So I think that outreach is kind of important still to have, so.
And the advantage of doing what you're what you're suggesting, having something in June is that what, once you have the public hearing posted for the town meeting, you're limited to the scope of any changes to that scope. So for example, in the ADU, the original, one of the ADU law bylaw proposals we did for November had a comprehensive set of regulations around ADUs, you know, a lease and other things, and people responded that they missed that in that simple change in the shortened version that just um, restrict, reduce some of the uh, requirements for the ADU. So we had, actually, people were further confused, even though we simplified it. So I think your point is a good, and what is, what do people really want about? You know, and then we have this whole family dwelling, I mean, uh, dwelling unit thing, which is actually what all of the ATU, what we're calling a U zoning board, you know, so the ADU one has a lot of complexity to it. Laura. If we were going to do a presentation on sort of general, what does zoning mean to you and what is zoning? I think I'd combine that with a specific zoning section that we're trying to get feedback on, and I'd make it three slides at the most. Because it, I I think it's not going to mean much to people until we get specific about one of the articles that we're working on. And then we take, say, senior housing, we do a, you know, three-slide overview of what is zoning, and maybe it has a roadmap of like here are the ones we've already changed, here are the ones in the parking lot that we know about. And uh, you know, let's get all the next three years of ones that might come before you, and then some, you know, we this is kind of a never-ending thing, right? Once you decide to think of them, we know there are other sections that we could look at. But I think if we could um, just really, you know, boil it down to a very three short slides at the beginning, and then say, okay, now we're taking senior housing, and we're going to go through it kind of clause by clause or section by section to say maybe just put the text up and you highlight the parts that you think are most um in- interesting or relevant to people. And then we could do a sort of a, you know, uh, like a canned Q and A almost about questions we anticipate getting, and we have this Q and A up on the board, so we can start the discussion with that and then open it up to people, but I think really trying to walk people through one section at a time or one one zoning article, if I'm using the right language, and helping people, giving them a chance to really understand and sort of dive deep into one because I think, and maybe and maybe have some illustrations about, you know, an ADU looks like this, you know, very simple sort of plans and diagrams kinds of things to visualize.
Okay.
So I have a quick comment. Uh, so there are only two besides the senior housing, the accessory dwelling units and the installation. There were two others that we didn't get to in November. One of them is non-conforming uses, which although very controversial, is not that complicated really. And the other is the cluster making the cluster available to smaller than five-acre lots, which I think would be very benef- beneficial to the town. So I'd like to consider all of them.
Well, there's also
Flood plane.
Flood plane.
On the flood plain, well, the flood plain is going to take longer anyways than that.
Not clear.
I I have an idea on the non-conforming use issue, which is that um we meet with town council and Sarah Malish and find out if the building, if it is correct, if what is written there is being correctly interpreted.
We need the building inspector.
And the building inspector, have a meeting with a, maybe Chris and I can volunteer to do that. And the second is town council to advise us on the applicability of case law in light of our current In light of our current uh nonconforming law because. She may say. Well, it says this, but case law says this, therefore the building inspector. So I think that there's a possibility that at least part of the amendments to that section seven. Can go, can go away, we can simplify the, rather than extracting the whole thing. And we can just amend a certain section to make it comply with case law.
I think meeting with town council and.
And the building inspector. So I'd, I'd volunteer.
Well, I, I, at first like you with the board wants to do on which, what we want to bring forward. I don't want to bring like ten articles.
No, but I'm saying on that one, rather than bringing it forward, it may be a matter of, of having this meeting to find out.
Okay.
Are we correctly? The way we.
It drafted that initially.
Well, they uh, the, the amended version is a Mark Bobrowski version, but the. The new one and the existing one almost say the same thing on the issue of um, on uh. Whatever the issue is.
Just clarifies.
And where I suspect that we are, the VDA and the building inspector are incorrectly reading our existing by law. So we can avoid going to town meeting on a controversial topic by getting clarity about what is currently written. So I, I'd like to start with that and then report back here on those two pieces of that nonconforming because. That nonconforming bylaw has come up prior to our, any of us being here. Gary Gilbert brought it up and it went down in flames and it's hard to understand. No matter how many seminars we have, we're all still somewhat confused. And if the existing bylaw does what Mark Bobrowski anyway advised. Because it almost says the same words. Um, then. So maybe we can uh get Sue to help us do as an attorney.
I'm happy to.
That would be great. So, so if we, the three of us can make a little subcommittee just on that topic to meet with. Through Betsy with council and and sort of sort that one out to determine if you even need to do it.
Okay, why don't I make a motion to create a subcommittee? To study the nonconforming use line, current language and. And see if anything be done.
Of Sarah, Sue and Chris.
Sarah, Sue and Chris, yes.
Second.
So um, just a little bit on process here, um, this was not on the agenda to vote on today.
We can vote it next time.
So if you want to do that. Want to do that for our to April tenth meeting.
Isn't it about how the zoning bylaws are going to come up and what we're going to do about them?
This particular one wasn't, but.
It wasn't listed, but it's just, it says proposed warrant articles discussion.
Okay. Feel it's okay.
I feel it's okay. That's my opinion, we have an attorney here.
Well, why don't we um.
All right.
Certainly invite our other two members to join the subcommittee if they are interested. We'll have public meetings.
Um, okay, so motion made and seconded, I will listen to the formation, uh, any uh discussion? Uh, take a roll, uh, Laura.
Discussion, just so, just trying to find out what the purpose is. So if the council says. You've been interpreting it wrong, it actually means this, then there is no need to change any language in it.
Maybe just me that we need to change it, but in a different way, in a less controversial way. Before we go to all the troubles of thinking about what the language.
This is getting to buy right and what's under, what's allowed by right or not. Getting clarity on it, okay. And a report from council.
Report back to this.
Yeah, seems like a useful thing to do.
First, let's session, take a roll call, uh, Chris.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Chair votes yes, unanimous. Okay, now we, uh, just a little uh primer on next week's annual town meeting and Alan is here. Just for the board's uh. Information, I've asked Susan Filbrick to speak on the adult entertainment motion. And I've asked Chris Olley to speak on briefly on the passing over of the two articles.
Three articles.
Well, two, one does not even, didn't even go. So um. Want to give you an update on that and then Alan, did you have any other comments?
I don't think Alan's on the field. This is Jim.
Okay, left. Okay, any other?
We need to vote this uh report from Betsy to uh Alan, which is, it's a, it's a um. Requirement that in advance of the bylaw um zoning amendments being, we uh on the warrant, we have to submit a. Brief report, so I think um Betsy has drafted it in this email. So I think we just move to uh, I'll move to accept the uh. Email of April third as the planning board report for the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Just one question, remember that Alan had asked for. The date of the discussion and then the vote and that's the same date, the February twenty seventh.
So February twenty seventh is when the article to move the adult entertainment.
We voted.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, roll call vote on the motion, uh, Mr. Olley.
Yes.
This, this penny.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Betsy, for doing that. Yeah.
Uh, just an update on the MBTA community, uh, section three A.
So I have sent out a letter to all the boards and commissions that aren't supposed to be represented. And I asked them to.
Task force.
Um, yeah, for the task force, I did ask them to make an appointment within the next two weeks. Cause we will start after town meeting.
And I also sent you all uh in a copy of the slide pack that I received during this. Citizens Planet Training Collaborative held on Saturday, the eighteenth.
I did put that in chairpoint, too.
It was, yeah.
So it had uh some good information in there if you haven't had a chance to go through.
Pretty much a repeat of mostly of the, of the other one that we did where, was there any new um information, new discussion or new?
Well, the new discussion.
Besides the H E.
You either comply with the law or you're breaking the law was the word from the state at that.
In terms of general, yeah.
So uh, that's kind of the new thing.
Betsy, what do you think about the um? Has that ever been done before with chap, with um zone, other zoning issues? Has that been the?
I've never seen it. I've never seen such a mandate.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a interesting, just procedurally, you're not judging the, the content or the. But I think procedurally, it's an interesting um, that the, that the chapter forty. Requires that zoning changes such as this require a two thirds vote of town meeting. And that would imply that uh zoning changes are therefore subject to. Local jurisdiction, right? Um, if we want to change a district or adopt a new zoning map or make a.
Well, my understanding is that, and I'm not.
Yeah.
Clear on it all, but. As it relates to housing and affordable housing, it may be just majority vote.
I think that's right.
And i- it's, but if. If you have a mixed use development, then it's um. Two thirds vote, or i- it's really, I, I haven't quite got my.
Majority or it would be important to know as we.
Yeah, I will.
Two thirds or.
I will do.
Yeah, whether it's a simple majority.
There were some changes when they ended up moving forward on forty eight, three A, which is the.
A majority, but nonetheless, my argument still is.
Majority vote at the.
That town meeting has, a town meeting has to adopt changes to zoning and um. The, the threat of. You know, of litigation or. Certain provisions of.
There's a number of communities that said, we can't do it. Um, Brookline, um, Middleborough, um.
Line said they can't do it.
Brookline is moving forward. I was just reading about it today. Are getting their fall town meeting. They, they're already having public hearings on their proposed plan.
But there was an article in the Globe a little while ago that said Brookline was.
Are you thinking Berkeley maybe?
No, I'm thinking Brookline, Mass, um, with, where in the Globe anyhow. A number of people in Brookline said, we're way over built as it is. So now we're gonna adopt this new zoning.
Well, they do have a um, an opposition group that's formed. Um, but you, you could be right. I was just reading about Brookline today. I'm sure. There's a lot that I haven't read.
Well, there's, I'm sure, you know, I haven't been totally up to date on it, but um. I know that Middleborough M, um, MAPC ended up. Apparently doing a study that showed that it wouldn't be feasible for them to do it or possible for them to do it. So um, I guess a number of communities have already said. You know, we, we can't do it.
When I heard, what I read was there are two hundred seventy seven communities that are affected by this. And five have said they would, five out of the two seventy seven. So far, but.
So far, yeah.
So Brookline's under the gun, any rail community has just to the end of.
Right.
This year, right, right.
We have the extra year, but my feeling is. The board here should come up with a s- a solution that keeps the character and has the density and will get the best bang. And, and keeps the grants and then it would be up to the voters to say yes or no, um, whether we. Don't go through with this or not, but I think it's our due diligence to come up with something.
So I think that both your housing production plan and your master plan. Appicate for studying more diverse housing, so use it as an opportunity.
Yeah, exactly.
Um.
Right, well, you were saying that, I mean, I don't want to articulate, but that if we, if, you know, in a year from now, there is litigation. As where that we have at least made a good face, faith effort to comply by putting forward a compliant plan. Uh, helping people to understand it, assessing its pros and cons that we, it seems like we're better, much better off than if we just throw up our hands. It's I can't do it.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Well, the state is more likely to work with us.
Right.
Um, and right now they're not being forced to work with anyone.
Right.
You know, but all they've said is there will be no exemptions, but, but they haven't said that they won't work with any of the towns.
So we applied, sorry, but we applied for a sixty thousand dollar grant with one stop. To have some of the analysis done because I'm not familiar with some of these programs. So I'm, I'm planning on being kind of the boots on the ground person here to kind of feed information in, but um. Um, anyhow, um, I'm pretty confident that we'll get some funding to, to help in the analysis.
Laura, may I? Yeah, um, so there's a lot of energy saying spent on, yes, we can, no, we can't and speculating about that. I think we're going to learn when we get down to site specific and site analysis and look at the designated area. And overlay the flood maps um and look at, you know, where we might want housing to happen. That we'll see what the numbers are that we can accommodate and we can also put uh controls on there that um. Can uh, you know, limit the scale and uh um mass and so forth of these um. Elements of housing, we might also propose that, you know, we're looking at it and the half mile radius. Doesn't work in the direction of the water and let's propose we go a little up the hill instead, so we could come back, I think, with a proposal that is a modified response. To the kind of. Um, you know, the half mile radius is a good rule of thumb for how long it takes to get from here to there in five minutes or whatever, right? But if we say actually the half mile circle doesn't really apply, but if we look more in this direction, we want to get out of the flood zone and so forth. We will see that we can comply to X degree and how many units we can achieve and, and let's just go through the steps and find out what that reveals.
Yeah.
That's the thing is or no.
So in one of the many discussions I've had with Chris Klutchman about this, who is the state's lead on this. I ex- repeatedly explained filled tidelands.
Yeah.
And um. Manchester is required to have thirty seven acres.
Yeah.
Of this and seventeen, or fifteen or seventeen are supposed to be within a half mile radius.
Yeah.
And she said. Maybe it's just not feasible and.
Make an argument.
I mean, she'll want to be. Uh, you know, kind of overly uh.
Right.
Conveying that everybody's going to get waivers, but um, I think if a good faith effort is made to study it.
The good faith effort is the key.
Then.
Make it technically feasible and show what can technically, but I also think it's important to say. Because there's a flood zone or because there's an area that is subject to future projections of flooding. That we're not spot zoning for multifamily housing here. Every use that we pick is just as vulnerable to floods, so. It can't be, you know, no multifamily housing here, but other things are okay. We have to make that same distinction with our flood maps.
It's very curious to me. I was watching a Salem Mass Conservation Commission meeting the other night. And um, I do it in my spare time. But anyhow, what was curious to me is um. There's a developer who came in, um, it's a, it's like a seventeen acre site. All of it is flood plain. Um, they're doing platform buildings, parking underneath. Um, the existing use is an industrial use, they're proposing two hundred and fifty units of housing. And of those two hundred and fifty, fifty are sixty percent area median income. And it's, I don't know if it's going to sail through, but um, that's double the. Um, affordable housing requirement that the ta- that the city normally has. Um, I'm looking at, they're basically building up the site um, so that there's less water and.
Putting vulgar, less vulnerable uses at.
Yeah, but it was a real eye opener to watch this meeting because the entire site is. Um, it, it filled, filled uh marshlands and.
I mean, a lot of our town, our entire downtown.
Yeah.
Of it are.
I mean, pretty much the, the rail line.
Yeah.
Over is.
Historically how rail lines were built.
And, and the Reed Park and Mascanoma.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I have one comment on this too, which is it may be that the existing downtown complies physically. It's just that our zoning doesn't. So if we just made the zoning comply with what's built out there, we may just skate through this without doing anything.
Or at least close.
Close, yeah, as long as it's close.
Because ten Famer Street is not zoned for the density that is currently built there.
Half the downtown is nonconforming.
Right, so if we were to simply, I think that's a really good point. That we were to simply zone our existing downtown for what is. Assume that it, assume that, you know, the tornado came through and we had to then rebuild. Um, uh, the flood, whatever, that, that if you at least, if you want to build it exactly the way it was. The current zoning would not allow that except for the clause that says you can rebuild in the nonconforming and within two years or whatever it is. But um, but it's an interesting point, like what, and I think a. Yeah.
But when you say not do anything, what do you mean? Because ultimately you need to get to by right.
By right, so, yeah, so if you made everything that's in the downtown allowable by right.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
That would maybe do it, I'm not sure. You have to do that analysis and see. The consultant do that in the maps.
I mean, downtown's kind of interesting because the building that Barrett Real Estate's in. Used to be a finest supermarket and that used to have another story on it, right? And then where the apartments are on Summer Street, beginning of Summer Street across from the train station, there used to be a big um. Yeah, the Horticultural Hall there.
No kidding, really?
I mean, it was a really huge building. I don't even remember that building.
I think it was torn down before it turned in.
I don't think it was torn down before I was born, but I might have been, you know, someone.
Okay, that was a little more than I thought we would discuss, but good talk. I um. Like to uh now give the uh word to Betsy on this proposed public hearing, which is our next meeting on regulations. Also, maybe um so we're not duplicating effort with your subcommittee and just talk about talk that through and how that's going. So um. Betsy, would you want to?
Sure, um. So. Several months ago, um. I. Started looking at the fact that the planning board doesn't really have rules and regulations on. Kind of generally how they run their meetings. Um we were advised by legal counsel that. If we were, if the board were hiring an outside consultant, there needs to be very specific rules and regulations there. Um and then I did a little more digging and found out that the. Present fee schedule and the. Um all of the application forms are actually in a appendices in the subdivision rules and regs. Which makes absolutely no sense. So um what I did was um I was originally going to develop standalone. On documents. Um so maybe some uh upgrades to site plan and subdivision with checklists and things like that. And then um at the last meeting, I asked about how the. How we, how the subcommittee, planning board, subcommittee on rules and regulations would interface with me. And I was told at that time that. We were probably working on different things. Um several days later, um I received an email from Christina, which indicated that. They really wanted to see something on a par with. The Harvard Mass rules and regulations. So what I did was I took all of the documents that I had. Um and made a table of contents. And um just started going through as much as I could of um of. Of those documents. So.
That's great.
So what um I put on SharePoint. Is a fairly lengthy document. Which has. Um the table of, it's in very rough form. And the reason um. There's, so what I wanted to do. Is at least get the first part of it in reasonably good condition. And then what I do is I bring over. Documents from the subdivision uh appendices. So um. Anyhow, um I had some general provisions. Conduct of planning board meetings. Protecting zoning bylaw amendments, which I left blank because what I'm in the process of doing is taking mass general, taking it right out of mass general law. Um site plan review, I explained what it was, the process, the rules and regulations. Special permit, the process, the rules and regulations, groundwater recharge, special permits. Subdivision rules and regulations, which. We will attack. Before everybody goes away for summer vacation. I've already talked with engineering on this. Um and then the appendices, which includes a fee schedule. Um an application for special permit, an application for groundwater protection, special permit. Uh earth removal permit, site plan review. Um and site plan and special permit include checklists now. Um and then subdivision forms and driveway access approval form, which is probably being updated. So but it. The goal here is to get everything in one document. So that nobody's digging in the back of the subdivision rules and regulations to say. You know, where is this document? Where is this fee schedule? One thing um. In doing this is I also did a short. Analysis of about eight or ten communities on what everybody's fees were. And. Um site plan and special permit are woefully low. And we really don't charge for the legal notices and the mailing out. So actually. Um the planning board budget is somewhat subsidizing some of these permits. So um for example, site plan review is a hundred and fifty dollars, special permits a hundred and seventy five. And most communities are charging three to four hundred dollars. So um my understanding is that. This board could make a recommendation to the board to select the select board and then the select board is. Either yays or nays um the fee. So um so. Anyhow.
One question I have is with the fees, a man's a detail, but the fees for special permits with the, for the planning board special permit. Would those be the same fees for the zoning board of appeals, special permits?
The zoning board of appeals is an independent board. They can adopt their own. You know, they can make recommendations to the board of, the select board on on what their fees would be. I'm just concerned about this board.
Okay, great. I just might, because we have so many special permit. That are for. Things that may not need a special permit, given the prior discussion. You know, in our home owners.
So anyhow, that's kind of how I've set it up. It's not totally complete. But I figured I would get it to you to start looking at it and um. Probably by the end of this week, I will have a revised document. We have. Um scheduled a public hearing for April tenth. And. The reason that I think it needs to be moved forward is. All of the documents that are in the subdivision documents, it's just really bogus and um. Particularly with um. Self signaling coming in. It helps to have checklists. It helps to have regulations that say this is how we're hiring an outside consultant. Fair and square, you know, this is how we're doing it and um. So.
So it's a public hearing for the entire body or just for section seventeen?
It's um it will be for the entire body as soon as I. Do some fill in and it's mainly right now I'm doing. A fill in of zoning bylaw amendments and then I'm re. Reconfiguring some of the stuff in the. All uh appendices and the subdivision regs.
Fabulous effort. What a ton of work. That's great. Uh I have two questions, just having glanced through it. One is, well, one was in reference to fees. Um I have seen examples where. Um if we increase the fees to, you know, cover uh the costs that we are really bearing as a town. That makes a lot of sense. I have seen in other towns, I think Cambridge um. For certain fees, there is an income limit, so there is an exemption for uh residential fees with a certain income limit. It it's a hardship for someone. Have to pay those fees for, you know. Whomever those folks might be. And then uh I glanced in here, I think it was in site plan review, but there was, I noticed there was a reference to. The requirement that the plan be prepared by. Landscape architecture, a landscape architect, civil engineer, or a certified landscape designer. Does that ring a bell that turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't know what a certified landscape designer is, but the license for a landscape architect or a civil civil engineer is. A lot to do with public health, safety and welfare. And so when we're doing um site plan review, I think we should not let it be.
Okay.
By someone who's not licensed.
Okay, okay.
Particularly where it also addresses stormwater and things like.
Right, right. Well, I'm assuming that stormwater is going to be, you know, a licensed engineer, certified in mass. So, uh okay, so. I mean, as as you take a look at this, because it's a lot to weigh. Just flip me your comments. Um. Um I I I understand that there's certain parts of it that don't look pretty. Um and I'm gonna fix those up. But if you can get me content.
Okay.
Um just, you know, send me a quick email if you have any questions on content or comments on content. Then what I'll do is I'll include them in the tracked version.
Okay, great.
What um is there any duplicate? Uh you're you're staying away from the planning board uh rules and regulations.
Well, I asked to participate, but then I didn't want to drive to Manchester on a Wednesday, so and it wasn't a Zoom meeting.
Right, it was one of the things if you if you guys could make that a uh sort of a hybrid meeting.
So, yeah, so I can't speak for Mary or Christina, unfortunately, but I can tell you that. We did meet last two Wednesdays ago, I guess. And uh I think there is some overlap, unfortunately, but I don't think it's tremendously difficult to fix. And you did hear the word about the Harvard. Uh did you look at the town of Harvard?
I did look at the town of Harvard um and um. What Christina sent me, um wait a minute, I can um. I can pull that up. Okay, so she sent me on. The fifteenth of March. She sent me the Harvard document. And pretty much um. It's uh chapter one thirty three, planning board procedural rules and regs, Harvard Mass adopted, revised, blah, blah, blah. And so there's the general provisions, there's approval not required, there's fees, there's subdivision plan, there's special permits.
That's what you're doing.
Site plan, that's exactly what I'm doing. And um erosion control, uh scenic roads, which we don't have here. Protective bylaw amendments, which I'm including hearings, it's already been discussed, design review board, which we don't have. Um I have. Kind of used it as a template. Um my concern is that there's some language in here that is. I'm not a lawyer, but. There's language in here that I think is a little.
So.
Suspect.
So in terms of operations, internal operations of the planning board. We did have a big, pretty good discussion about it and she. We had a lot of comments. She was, she took notes. She was gonna write them up and. Send them out, but she had, of course, hasn't done that given what's happened.
Right.
But this, this is more about how the, not us, the 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 document that Betsy has prepared is really. Is a little bit less than, I think, I mean, not less, they're, aren't they two separate things?
Well, they could be two separate things, but.
I don't think they're two separate things at all.
Well, what's, so this, so what we're working on as a committee was. How the board is organized, uh how we take votes. Things about um. Conflict of interest.
I've included all that.
Yeah, okay, so I. So that's all in there. And we also, the other thing we uh I was asked to get in touch with Greg and see if we can. Include in the regulations. The play of town planners role.
I included that. The Mullen rules in there. Uh hybrid meetings is in there. I mean, you name it, it's in there. It's like. The whole refrigerator.
So now I'm gonna put on my merry hat and say, well, it's all well and good, but we're going into a public hearing. Before we've really discussed any of these. Regulations ourselves.
Well, in response to the merry hat, I would say um this was, could be discussed for the first reading, which is also in there, two readings. Um so this could be first read.
Then continue.
And. We could have the second reading at the public hearing on the tenth. But I made it very clear at the last meeting what the interface was. And I also made it very clear that. Time was of the essence, given. Self signaling wants to come in. Um and file in April.
And we can also, with a public hearing, amend.
Exactly.
This is not.
Exactly.
So this is not um in. You know, etched in a stone tablet.
So in this public hearing, you're, are you gonna present these rules and regulations? Because that's.
Because I'm not stepping on anybody's toes.
No, I think.
So the only thing I was gonna just suggest is that make sure we do get it on. Maybe as a PDF on the, with with the agenda would be the easiest way to to go, to be available to. The public in advance, maybe even put it, we know that it's gonna be on the April tenth meeting. You could actually put the as a attachment there even in advance of the agenda. Or um with some sort of, you know, raft agenda with this as a PDF, so that the the public has access to it.
Right.
Now, and then for how, um have you done?
Has access to it now and what I'm hoping to do. It's scanned on on the town's website.
Oh, it is. Okay, great.
We've been doing that since February.
Okay, so it's in the me, tonight's meeting packet.
It's in on SharePoint. And if you go to the planning board website, it's a scanned package. But what my goal is, is to see if I could get. The bulk of the comments by this weekend. So that I can make changes to it. And um. So that people have a good week or so to take a look at it.
So my advice is if you make changes, that.
It's gonna be tracked.
Okay, but you take down what's on the, put the fresh one up on the website and get rid of the old one.
Okay.
Because it starts to accumulate all these versions and it starts to get confusing.
Yeah, I think there's two things. One is I'm looking at it and fabulous that we have the meeting packets there. Um available, but I think that it's important that you have the meeting packet so that that's, that's a thing that that's that was ready for tonight. But then I think there needs to be a document. You could just put it in the same place that is, that is entitled draft regulations for April tenth public hearing.
Okay.
I think if you just, um and then you can keep updating, take down the old one and put up the new one as you have them available, amended, version one, version two. And I think you can use the exact place. And then in the agenda, it could say, run under the agenda for for material, see this URL.
Okay.
Um and then, but I think it should be the the title, instead of just having it be meeting packet. It needs to have the.
Needs to be solo.
It needs to be solo. It needs to be laid named so that people can find it.
Perfect.
But I think you've got, what you've got right here could be put up for the um could be put in that place right now.
Okay.
Which would be great.
Okay.
Do you have the keys to do that or is that just?
That's Tiffany. But if I, if I get the bulk of it done by Thursday, I can hand it over to Tiffany.
In order to she can put some kind of. Special banner or something up there. So the public is aware there's gonna be this public hearing to discuss.
All right, well, let me see what I can do.
And I one final question, which is.
Paragraf to the cricket directing people to that. That's something possible.
Uh I could probably do that, yeah.
FYI.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Driveway entrances, are they included in this?
Yeah, it's in there.
So this public works, look at the driveway.
That's the old one.
Right, we need to.
I'm putting that in as a placeholder with the idea that. Your committee was working on driveway entrances, so.
Didn't talk about it though.
Pardon?
We haven't talked about it at all.
Is that part of your, your?
So I just drafted, I just drafted the driveway entrances to give to Mary so she could. Propose them or change them or whatever she was gonna do.
I think we want engineering input on it.
Yeah, we certainly agree.
Well, what is there is the existing document and I'm using that as a placeholder. We can. Adopt certain elements of this to get things rolling. We can adopt certain elements of this to get things rolling.
Right.
And then we can revisit and hold a new public hearing.
Yep, I think that the old one was when we were doing the driveway entrances and it just needs to be modified, at least. Mod, needs to be modified, it could just reflect the DPW if there, and the language from. The chain zoning, the, the general bylaws, but.
Yeah, I may have enough time to talk with Nate about this because we have. Um, a situation where it's not a driveway entrance, but it's a, a situation with, um. It's actually a groundwater one, so we, I, I can perhaps make the groundwater stuff there.
Next meeting, right, the, uh, public hearing.
Yeah, so.
So, so Nate is aware of this curb cut entrance that we've talked about, so.
Yeah.
Well, we need to get them a draft so they can read on it.
So you had one that you sent me that was the most recent, so.
Use that, too.
So I can use.
See if he has any comments on it.
Is that the primary?
Is that the one? No, that's not from, Mary's. I don't, I don't think, I think Mary's not interested in doing.
Well, I'll, I'll see if I can work on that and, and try to get a total package done by. Beginning of next week at the latest.
I think that the new bylaw is actually quite clear about the criteria for the driveway entrances. If you, if you look at the new bylaw that we passed in November.
Yeah.
Um, there was quite a bit of go round and round about that, and we've added quite a bit of language that, about the criteria that have to be looked at. And if they don't comply, then it comes to the planning board who, and, um.
There was.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll look at that, and I'll see if I can fold that in.
Yeah.
There was, I don't think we talked about a lot of the engineering details.
Yeah, but it was sort of, and it was one, you know, sort of the goals of the, of the, of the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think one of the things around driveway entrances that. You missed in all of that discussion and in our visits to driveway, and it's, is that a lot of times the building. If, if, if a property wants to change its entrance from here to over here. They often be, begin building their house, finish building their house, and then come for the driveway entrance. Um, once the house is built with the, with the, with the, um, garage on this side of the house. And then, when you look at it, the driveway entrance is now very close to another. For a corner, a blind corner and that kind of thing, so I think one of the issues around the driveway entrance. That at least I think we could improve upon is when in that process it is applied for.
Before the building.
Before the building permit or concurrent with the building permit, because we did have one which, that was.
Already done.
Already done.
That was, that's, I included that in the draft regulations.
Yeah, so, um. And I think, from Paul's perspective. There's access to the site. And the plans comply with zoning. You know, that's.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this?
It's kind of like. The kitchen sink is in there.
Yeah, I see that, and I, I think it's great. We needed the sink, I mean, let's not let the perfect be the end of the good here.
Right, so, um, I will continue to work on that and really.
Do you want comments on it by this week?
By this week.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Great.
Okay. Um, thank you, Betsy, uh, planners report within our packets, anything you want. That we haven't talked about or any?
Okay, um, yes, MIT.
Oh, yes.
Um, MIT, there's a professor or instructor at MIT, uh, Jeff Levine. Who is in the planning group, and he put out on the planner's listserv that he was interested in a. Um. He has a class that it's a class that, um. Move, it's a two-year class apparently, and it's on, um, community, um, wait a minute, let me, let me. Set the email, it's probably the best, but. So, um. Hang on. Uh, I can't find the original email, but he teaches a class, um, in, um. Community, um, creation of community, and, um. So he sent out an email on the listserv. Um. And, um, so I responded to him and basically said, um. You had a request on the planner's listserv about using a community for a two-year class of yours on community growth and planning. Um, I did speak with the town administrator Greg Fetterspiel, and he gave me the go-ahead to approach you about the town of Manchester by the sea being a participant. The town has its challenges, flood plain, sea rise, lots of filled tidelands in the town's commercial district, plenty of ledge and blasting. All with the average house price of about one point two million, will be studying MBTA zoning over the next two years. As well as trying to figure out other locations for diversified housing. With ninety-five percent of the tax base being residential. Uh, over thirty-five percent of the population and over sixty-two by twenty thirty, there's some interesting issues. Planning board will be entertaining a large commercial industrial use, cell signaling, a drug research company. Over the summer months for a special permit and site plan review, so that adds to the mix. Um, so, um. Um, I explained who I am and, um, that the board is a diverse board, working on zoning amendments, developing rules and regulations for variety of purposes. Um, and with several members working hard to keep the group focused, if you're interested, give me a call. So then Greg added an email, um, he says a little bit, Jeff, the big question is, we have, we have. The big question we have is how to diversify our housing stock while preserving the character of the community. Over time, we have lost the smaller homes in town and have become a town of relatively large single-family homes, obviously, the MBTA zoning requirement. Uh, chapter forty-eight, section three A is front and center, needs a detailed analysis, regardless. Of where we end up on this, we need new strategies for creating more diverse housing stock for town, for the town. Seniors lack options to downsize and stay in town, singles and couples without children have few options, and young families are hard-pressed to find a starter home. Add in the challenges we face with, uh, rising seas, bigger storms, and the solutions are even more complex. How a small town can create a more balanced mix of housing options while protecting its small town character would make a good case study. Thanks for your interest in this. I will also add to you that. When my father was the chairman of the planning board here back in the seventies. He would come home and we would have this ongoing discussion. So some things never change.
He was just, we, we have the minutes from those meetings.
It's kind of weird, I see his handwriting in a lot of documents, so, but this is how I, how I'm here. Um, so, um. Anyhow, um, we're hopefully going to have a discussion with him on Thursday. Because, um, he wants to talk with us a little more about our proposal, and he's narrowed it down to a couple of towns. So, um. Anyhow, that's kind of.
Student class or undergrad?
It's graduate.
Okay, yeah.
Um.
So, what? Well, I know that the, um, that is a graduate department, not a undergraduate. I don't know personally. So having worked with many, many, any students, I think that being a very, being narrower, I mean, I don't, uh, narrow and specific. Is, tends to get a better, um, outcome.
Mm-hmm.
And the three A zoning and the diverse housing. Has so many layers that I think, um, it's probably the most interesting to them, but I also wonder if, um. There's an opportunity for the climate resilience as a, um, as a segment of the work. Um, I don't know. I was headed in the same direction as far as belief and overlay of the climate resilience, because there are so many, the interesting studies. Boston Green Ribbon Commission and thinking about rising tides and rising sea level and stronger storms and how to. Um, think about future development and change, especially along waterfronts to accommodate that and still provide public access and. Um, I think diverse housing could be a piece of that as well, but, um, with all the work that Town Green is doing. Are they studying Manchester? I see articles all the time about Gloucester, Rockport, Essex.
Wait, who's doing it?
The Town, Town Green and the, um. The Cape Ann Climate Coalition, is that where the, uh, Charles Waltime study with Harvard is attached?
I do not know.
I don't know either, but I see a lot of it in the paper about those towns and. I wasn't sure if Manchester was tied into it, so I thought, I thought maybe there might be a connection there.
I mean, I can contact them and we can chat.
Um, yeah.
I mean, it's a very interesting issue to me, given the fact that you've got, you know, a big chunk of downtown in Mascanomo Park and Reed Park and, um.
Yeah, it's a lot of channels there.
Came through from the harbor up to almost C Street.
Right, um, and what I found really interesting in the, uh, report on it, more in the, um. The coastal zone management study is that a lot of the vulnerable. Um, parts of town are actually town that's, the, the land that is town-owned or municipal-owned. So, which gives you some possibilities than, you know, as opposed to being mostly in residential use, say. So to be able to do some thinking and visioning about that, I think would be really exciting.
Okay.
Yeah, if you let, even if you further limited it largely to the town-owned parcels. Um. Water plants. All the town hall land. And I, and I also think that there's just the whole Mascanomo Park. Um. As a, you know, that, that, the waterway, the public access along that, which is also in the master plan. The, um, bathroom. Yeah, all of those things, the, the public space is the public-owned. Visit, I just, student projects are better when they're narrower.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, but they could be, but it could be exciting to have student. Student energy around those ideas.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I sometimes find the student projects are. If they're visioning and they're not super constrained by, you know, we need to check this box, we need to, you know, we don't. If you're trying to just get them to solve a problem, that can be a difficult thing to ask of a student project to do, but if you're trying to get, lay a bunch of. Constraints and challenges in front of them and say, you know, give us some visioning exercises for us. Then I think you can get some really exciting ideas. They're not concerned, they're not paid.
Because they're not constrained.
They're not constrained and they're.
I'm, I'm thinking chapter ninety-one and all this other stuff, and they're just out there.
Right, so there's, I mean, they do, some constraints are helpful to them and to us to kind of tie it back to reality, but it's not like we're hiring them to do something.
Right.
We're asking them.
And they're a little learned, too.
Yeah, right.
Right, um, I mean, my original thinking on it was, um. It, it might be very helpful, it might provide some solutions or at least some vision.
Yeah.
For. What some of us may be missing, I don't know.
Yeah. Well, I just, sorry, I was gonna say, I would be curious to know how he structures this class, whether he, um. Whether students were in either alone or in, in groups.
There's eight of them.
To do various, if he wants eight projects, or if he wants one project that they all work together on.
Well, those questions will be asked.
Yeah, I have other ideas if there were eight projects or even four and they're teaming, yeah. All right, yeah. Um. I was just gonna say that, like, the Green Ribbon Commission of Boston, you know, some of these really big city climate change plans about public access and public use of the waterfront to directly mitigate climate change. I haven't seen anything like that at a kind of smaller town scale, and. The, the, what did you say? Was there a study done that was, uh, Sal Sandhurst watched it? Well, yeah, I think they might be connected, Cape Ann Climate, too. But anyways, I've been seeing, you know, I've been reading a lot of these studies for larger cities, Cambridge has done a lot around, you know, climate vulnerability.
They've done some outrageous things.
Yeah. Really interesting work, but taking it a scale of our town would be, I think, um, well, it's kind of a manageable size for a planning class, too. That's also what's nice about it, you're not trying to solve for the whole city of Boston.
Well, in fact. This was a while ago, Cambridge did a whole study on what would be underwater. You know, in twenty thirty or twenty forty or whatever, and Cambridge Riverside were, which is all filled tidelands, were, are underwater, and.
Yeah.
They had adopted a bylaw that would allow accessory dwelling units in basements. And now these basements are flooding, so they kind of got rid of that law.
Yeah, well, they've done a lot in recent years with climate vulnerability and thinking about where the moment happens and.
Yeah.
And the kind of public health aspect of it.
Yeah.
Well, we just sat through a study, right, about what was being flooded, moving into the select board's meeting, sent in on that.
That was so boring.
Yeah. So, okay, thanks. Um, so I added, um, this a little more definitive definition to this liaison committee update, so, um. I think we talked about most of these already, but I, I know these are all, uh, ongoing things to keep my head straight on who's working on what, so, um. Coastal Zone Management Steering Committee, have you met at all?
There's been one meeting of the committee that's been assigned to the coastal zone vulnerability, so we've had a meeting. And then the same presentation was made in the select board a week or so after that. Um, and so they are in there. The, the group, the consultant group started, I guess they started gathering some existing conditions in November. The committee members started in late February or March.
Is this a town group, or is this a regional group?
This is Pasan O'Neill, the Pasan O'Neills.
Okay, okay.
Study. So they presented existing conditions, um, analysis, we made some comments, one of the comments I had was that a lot of the area that you're showing that is vulnerable is actually, appears to be municipal-owned land or. You know, and/or has infrastructure on it, like the water pumping station and the. Um. Yes, yeah, yeah, yes, uh, sorry, the way, ways.
Store.
Yeah.
Pumping station.
Um, the electrical equipment by the train, which is not town-owned, but, you know, town parking lot, there was a lot of the land that was. Have been filled tidelands, of course, because that's where that happens, and was still under municipal control, maybe sixty percent of it or possibly more. So that was just interesting, it kind of focuses on the area around Sawmill Brook and Harbor's Edge and, um. The low-lying kind of filled land sort of behind the railroad station. Uh, and it shows flood, it's beginning to show flood projections for, uh, I think, you know, up to twenty seventy-one percent storm kind of thing, so. Um, they are gonna go on to some alternatives analysis in March and April. And then, uh, come back with a draft recommended action plan. Sometime in April or June and finish a report out in June, I think they may have to finish by this. And they're just looking at the downtown, or are they looking at like, um. Over by Black and White Beach, where, in other areas where, where there's, they're focused on the inner hardware primarily, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. On the harbor management plan working group, I think the select board last week voted you, Sarah, onto that, I think you're in. And I haven't heard, have you heard about them having a meeting, or what the story is on that?
If not, if. Is there a charge or a specific, um, goal of the harbor management?
Um, I would ask Greg right now, um, just because I missed the last meeting.
I'm sure I'll hear.
Kathy's on if you want to. I think she was, uh, at that, uh, Kathy, you have a comment on that?
Hi, no, I don't, um, it was, I, I do know we kind of renamed it from a harbor master plan to a harbor management plan.
Under management.
So, um, I think buy-on is probably the, um, uh, best source of information on the exact scope where it currently stands.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, um, FEMA maps, flood plane by law, that's you.
So Mary and I will eventually be working on the FEMA flood plane, updating the FEMA flood plane, um, by law. Um, and the maps were given, as I said earlier, I sent, um, an email to FEMA representative to see if we could get an extension of time for comment. Um, we did get maps. The maps are, um, with Sue Croft and I believe we have the other set of maps. But I want to try to work to get them online.
Good. Um, thank you. Rules and regulations subcommittee, I guess we've heard enough.
Probably have.
One comment about rules and regulations.
Okay.
Sue pointed out to me that when she was sworn in, that the town clerk, um, gave her that, um,
Committee handbook.
Handbook, which is now, thank you, a shared point.
Yeah.
Um, it seems to me that even though it says it, go, it, we're governed by it that we, you know, maybe we could put it on the agenda to just vote to adopt it, um, as our own. I mean, it's sort of, it, it's part, it's.
Well, we can fold it into, I meant to do that, fold it into the rules and regs.
Put it in by reference to those.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that would be the most.
Yeah.
Uh, comprehensively do it, but.
Yeah, that's another one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then as it gets updated, we are then current with it.
Right.
But I thought it was good. And I think there are a couple of things in it about, um, particularly around, you know, if we take a vote, even if it's not unanimous that we, that we, that the vote of the committee and that we stick to it. So.
Good point. Excellent. Um, MBTA communities task force, um, as Betsy said, I think we want to get going from behind the, uh, original schedule set, but I think they want to get going on that right after town meeting. So, um, guys will be, uh.
Yeah.
The water resource task force, uh, Sarah attended the last one, gave a report. There's, the next meeting is Wednesday, which I will attend. I have nothing to report. Um, CPC, uh, is kind of in a sleeping period there, uh, projects go before annual town meeting next week. Any other, um, committee, uh, comments? Okay, so, um, approval of regular minutes two thirteen and two twenty-two, um, anybody, uh, read them?
Yeah. I will. Can move to approve.
I'll second both of them.
Any done? Roll call?
I was not here on the thirteenth, so I can only vote on the twenty-sixth.
Let's go on the thirteenth roll call, um, you have enough quorum?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Ms. Sterling.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yes, on the twenty-second.
No, the thirteenth now. Oh, no, that one didn't, sorry.
Move to approve.
Yes.
Miss Gilbert?
Yes.
Only?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, okay, minutes approved, Gail. Other ma- matters, so I spoke with Steve Carhart of the Downtown Improvement Committee today.
Okay.
Uh, they will be presenting soon to the select board an overall plan of the downtown, curbing, lighting, sidewalk signs. Um, I invited him to one of our future meetings after his presentation to the select board to present us with what, the same presentation for our comment and suggestions or questions, so, uh, and I understand you're in the liaison. I am, been going and Betsy, you've been going regularly. Thank you.
So, can I make a suggestion on this? If, or, well, it's lovely having, um, tonight's meeting without, you know, applicants and being, being able to talk about some of these issues, but in the event that we might have that happen in the future, maybe we could, we could have a joint meeting with a select board on that topic and then be able to take a hiatus on one of our regulations, just if that worked out. We'll see.
Sounds good. Maybe we could attend the present.
Yeah.
So we need, um, so.
You know, one, I have one more topic before this business. So our next meeting is, is an additional public hearing on one seventeen School Street application, which is in your packets, has been for a while. And Gail scheduled a sidewalk prior to our meeting, um, on, uh, April ten. So that's at five o'clock at one seventeen School Street.
Where is one seventeen School Street?
One seventeen. It's, um, if you're at the intersection with Arbella, uh, Pleasant Arbella School, if you head out of town toward, um, the golf course toward Essex County Club, it's the second or third property on the right. It's a white house. Um, it's one seventeen.
Okay.
I thought it was at five thirty.
I think it said five o'clock.
Looking for the, is it in today's?
So I'm being a date.
It was in an email. Oh, okay.
So it's April tenth?
April tenth at five.
I will not be able to make that hour clock be.
Um, I did ask that the, um, DPWN or the building inspector weigh in on this application and I assume you'll have some information for us.
I will, I will.
Overlayer district or wherever it is and what the rulings are.
Mm-hmm.
And this is about groundwater or something?
It's a ground, it's in a groundwater. Um.
Also a discharge thing.
Right, but if you read their reports, well, I will.
Okay.
They would. Okay, so, uh, Betsy, what's?
So, uh, the board received a letter from John O'Brien, who is the register of deeds at, uh, the Salem Registry. Um, basically to comply with chapter forty, national law, chapter forty-one, keeping the registry updated on your planning board members, including their signatures and both the appointment and expiration dates. Um, and so he wants us to fill out the form and uh, return it and please note regarding approval not required plans, it's a requirement that this section also be completed. If the requirement is a majority of the bo- the above signatures, please specify if only one or two signatures are require, required, but only by certain board members, please specify which members are authorized to sign and the number of signatures required. So what I would suggest is on the A and Rs, having, um, perhaps the chair and the vice chair be able to sign for A and R plans.
Both or either.
Either.
So, uh, do you want to make a, oh, he can't make a motion.
I will also tell you that in past years, um, so the, the way the law is worded is that actually a town planner or a planning administrator can s- sign an A and R plan if authorized. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I want the board.
Yeah, don't blame him.
Yeah. So, um.
We're gonna make a motion that the chairman or the vice, the chair or the vice chair be authorized to sign on behalf of the planning board for any.
That's, that's already, that's already a standard procedure. Excuse me, you already, you already have that.
Right, but they need to, um, put their signatures.
Right, if you, if you could sign it, I'll be happy to fill out your term, um, dates if you don't have that information.
Yeah, so I gotta sign both top and the bottom one. And then I'll just pass it around to everybody.
I thought it was two.
Yeah, I think that was just a COVID.
But that was just the chairman. I don't think the vice chair was.
Well, it might have been COVID, but it's still, it's still in place. There's not been any problem with, um, the Mylar going through with Ron's signature. We've had one since COVID, maybe two.
Where, what are we signing?
You're signing up top, I know. In that area.
I'm signing up top and on the bottom, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up? Otherwise, we'll see you all at town meeting. Take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
So much.
Second?
Second. I.
Hi.
Hi.
But adjourned, thank you all.